Call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May 20th meeting. Comment. Comment. Seen any here or online? Have you had the chance to read the minutes?
I would think I want you to accept this person.
It's been moved in second at all, and they were say hi.
Hi.
That's just three to zero. Mission comments.
I don't know.
I really don't either.
Wow.
Unusual, none of us has anything to say.
Actually, I might just add in, just, I thought of something, just to preface before you guys get started. Some of the things, I'm gonna try to do a better job this year, last year I was new and I know I didn't ask a lot of questions. So, just being a public meeting, when the public pays attention to what we're doing, you know, I'm gonna ask some certain questions and explain, you know, kind of what your organization does, how you contribute the funds that we give to benefit the county. Just, who's your board members, just more informational for everybody in Atchison County to know why we do what we do at our level, so just kind of give you a heads up, so you don't feel like you're put on the spot when I do that, so, thank you.
Okay. First is the Guidance Center, 2023.
Good afternoon. And as you have documents to be in addition to what I delivered last week, starting with an audit, like the 2021, we didn't have audit figures last Tuesday, but we have one this Tuesday. Copy of our audit figures, and then I noticed, my staff noticed, there were questions about funding private not-for-profits on social media.
Yes, this is great, thank you.
Provided this in response to that. And maybe I'll go over that first with permission, sure. So, certainly is a good question, you know, is the guy at the center and we are the Community Mental Health Center for Northeast Kansas, for Atchison, Jefferson, Leavenworth counties. And we have been in existence, starting here in Atchison, now for almost eighty-five years, eighty-three years to be exact. What I printed for you here today is an explanation of how community mental health centers have come into being and how we are really an instrumentality of county government. Kansas statutes have been created to allow mental, or to allow counties to resolve to create a mental health center and to resolve to fund it or not to fund it, so it's optional for counties to have mental health centers, it's optional also to fund if you, if you do create a communal health center. But then you partner with the state for licensure and to build out the service programs and funding for the community. And so, there are three ways to organize a communal health center, one is the county can create it as a department of the county, for example, like you have a health department, roads and bridges, you have those departments of the county, you can create community mental health as a department of the county. Or you can join with two or more other counties and form what's called a quasi-municipal organization, which we were originally formed in that way. First in Atchison and then Leavenworth and then Jefferson County joined and in about nineteen ninety-three or four, we became a private not-for-profit corporation. It's at that point that the counties agreed to contract with us for services. And so, last year, I asked you for a contract and it's that one-page document that spells out, you know, here's what we're gonna do, here's what you're going to do. But these statutes, nineteen dash four zero zero one is the first that says the Board of County, County Commissions of any county, Boards of County Commissioners of two or more, a jointly established community mental health center or facility for people with intellectual disability or both, but shall be organized, operated, and financed according to the provisions of this act. And then nineteen four zero zero seven references us as a private not-for-profit and your authority to contract with us and also to levy taxes on behalf of the service that we provide. So, I thought that those documents from statute give, I think, clarification and further support that we're more than just a private not-for-profit that's operating in the county, but we're really an instrumentality of county government licensed by the state. If you didn't provide for this by resolution, we wouldn't necessarily exist here in this county. But obviously, we do. The other documents are just why is funding for community mental health centers important? That comes off our website of the Association of Community Mental Health Centers of Kansas. There are twenty-six of us and we belong to an association and we advocate together each and every year with the legislature and with communities to further build out our service system. So, that's just briefly, you can read more at your leisure or don't, it might be nighttime reading, I don't know. But also in my letter to you, a request, I was responding to your questions that you asked in the request for information. So, I am indicating at this time that we're not asking for an increase in funding for twenty twenty-three in general operations or crisis stabilization. And the budget that I provided to you shows that last year, this current year, twenty twenty-two, we provided seventy-three thousand for operations, twenty-nine thousand five seventy-four for crisis stabilization. So, those are the two requests that we have for twenty twenty-three. If you read down through there, you can see the other counties, Brown, Donovan County have joined us in providing funding for the Crisis Stabilization Center. Jefferson County has stepped up as well as, as Leavenworth County. So, with that, maybe I should just be still and let you ask questions. But I know it's probably nice to hear, we're not asking for an increase, we're not asking for an increase simply because we know valuations have gone up, we know that the taxpayer burden is greater on individuals and we believe that we're gonna be stable through twenty twenty-three as we become a certified community behavioral health clinic, which we're slated to do in mid twenty twenty-three. So, we feel like we appreciate the increase last year and we'll just operate with that from the county this coming year. That's the same request you have with the other two counties as well.
I just recently was at a roundtable discussion, eight counties of our six sides, they talked about how much have worked. Who do the mental health ones, who do they help? But I was surprised, I brought the crisis, it's, I'd heard such a thing. And it's like, yes, it's neither yet, but one of them texted their sheriff in the meeting and they came back a total of reasons why we need a crisis. It's gonna be a real benefit, especially supporting health law enforcement.
I'll give you an update on where we are with the Crisis Stabilization Center, so I thought we'd be up and running by now, but that was delayed by things beyond our control, Leavenworth County bought the Cushing Building or was given to them and they began programming out space, how they wanted to use it for their existing departments. And early on, they said that we could have a portion of the building. They've also leased a portion of the building to a private entity that's gonna put sixteen psychiatric beds there as well and they're starting construction on that, but we worked with the architect. Somehow, just the process of things, I think their priority project was for the council on aging, which they're giving like twenty-five or thirty thousand square feet of space to them and we're getting about six thousand square feet. So, that was all done first, we did the programming and everything, and so we were second. And so, the architectural work is done, the demo is done and they have begun construction now. I don't have an opening date, but the expenses have begun, the county, the bid for that construction was a million dollars, over a million dollars, and they allocated all of it from their Spark Funds with the exception of a hundred thousand dollars that they want from us, which will come from the state grant for startup funds. So, we hope to, I'm interviewing this week for the project director, program director. I have one at three o'clock today, two tomorrow, and we're hoping to be in there by late summer. So, that's an update on Crisis Stabilization Center.
And how many beds will that?
So, there will be two, there will be three services there, one is a sobering unit where people who are intoxicated, who've indicated they may be suicidal or homicidal, that are willing to come. That's the thing that the condition again is all of these patients are voluntary, we don't have any authority to hold them beyond what the police do or the sheriff. The sobering beds, you can't really assess or know what's going on with someone until they're sober. So, we'll sober them up and probably move them then to the observation beds. And those are gonna be recliners where people will stay up to twenty-three hours as we work through the crisis, complete the assessments, work on transportation, work on discharge. Then there will be four rooms and possibly eight beds, and I say that if we have a mix of males and females, we may have fewer that we can house than eight at a time. But those will be crisis stabilization, these will be people with more serious mental health issues that is stabilizing on medication, working with family, working on a discharge plane, helping them to get whatever benefits, disability or other that they might have coming to them, to then discharge back to the community. We expect those people to stay anywhere from a week to eight weeks, possibly just depending on how fast we can work. So, those are the three services, sobering, crisis stabilization, and observation.
So, this private entity that's in part of the building is associated with mental health also. What, what is that? I mean, is this, I mean, it seemed like maybe this is almost, is this a way to funnel business into them or?
No, this, that was just coincidental, the way that that happened. This was a signature behavioral health on Missouri side, has a lot of psych hospitals in Missouri and they just did research and they wanted to come here. And so, when the hospital was purchased, they approached the county about space. And it will benefit us is if we have clients who are insured primarily, they will go to that psych unit. If not, they'll go to the state resources that we provide. So, we don't, we expect some interaction with them, we're gonna partner with them hopefully for food service and laundry service, but other than that, we won't have any kind of formal contract or agreement together.
I think that there's been very little, that's, I mean, I don't think the public knows very little about the stabilization. And even, I'm on the, no, are they? County, Northeast Kansas, multi-county health. And until recently, they didn't even know that there was a center opening, which, and they were very glad to hear it. But I mean, at what point do you start outreach to kind of even let them, the different entities like that know that may need to place them, right?
Well, so, now, I guess is the time where, you know, we know that construction's going on, we're hiring staff. I don't wanna do it too early lest they think that, you know, they can send them right now, but law enforcement and emergency rooms, they do know. And those are the two key referral sources really at this point. But letting the community know and educating the community about it is probably, we need to do some press releases, et cetera, for that in the near term. Yeah, no, and even public speaking, Adam and I are both available to come and do civic groups and other groups. Your group, for example, explain what it is, we need to show you the drawings of the layout of the facility, so.
I think that, yeah, multi-county health department, I think it'd be a great time to have you come up and speak with them when it maybe gets closer to opening what you all, you know, and you can show them more of your plans, thanks. I'll bring that up with, okay?
What's your annual fund drive to? I was curious about that.
What is it?
Yeah.
Okay, so, back in the early two thousands, we developed our first capital campaign for a building in Leavenworth. That's the first time we ever raised a charitable dime. As an organization, we started with a capital campaign and we raised about two point, two point four million dollars from the communities, as from the community, but also from national foundations. And from that, we developed a, obviously, a donor base. And so, every year, we reach out to our donor base via a letter request and they mail us checks. We also joined the Atchison Community Health Foundation and that, last year was our first year. And I think that campaign raised twelve thousand dollars in our first year. And so, our total fund drive last year was fifty-eight thousand, which was, we set a goal of thirty-five, so we exceeded it by twenty-three thousand dollars.
Thank you to know that, I, and I was just curious, cause I was like, I didn't remember hearing anything about an annual drive, but it's established donors, which makes sense, and my next question was gonna be about the foundation, so I'm glad you joined that as well.
Yeah. Well, one of the things that are national are consultants in our capital fund drive, so as you know, you can, you can have, you know, golf, garage, you know, garage sales, you know, all kinds of things, spend a lot of energy and effort, raise a lot of public awareness and still not making money. But if you have people who believe in your work, understand your work, and you develop and cultivate them, they'll write bigger checks, which is exactly the case in our situation. So, it's kind of a, it's not a low-key fund drive, it's, we kind of know who has the capacity to make gifts and who has interest in our work.
And then, I see that you're doing a lot of things for the youth and in childhood programs. Are those voluntary or how do people get the word out about, about what you have to offer as far as for the kids and youth of Atchison County?
Well, so, all of the services that we provide are to any patient who comes to us. If we get a, we have an early childhood program, three to five, and so, if parents bring them in, we do an assessment, we do a diagnosis, we work them up, we refer them to various services. One might be our day program, whether they're two to three hours, working in a group setting on various skills. They may be on medication, so we refer them to our medication provider, and then the family might be family therapy, so we refer them to a therapist. So, from age three essentially until seniors like myself. We can receive. I can now say, I'm seeing, I just paid my very first Medicare premium today, so.
I'm a little on over with.
So, so those are the, those are the services, we have those in all three counties. Those youth who are in those intensive level services have been diagnosed as seriously emotionally disturbed according to the state's definition. Many of them have Medicaid, if they don't, we apply for a Medicaid waiver, which puts them on Medicaid, give them that access to those services. So.
And I think we asked this last year, but just to reiterate, the mental health providers that are in Atchison County, your collaboration or how you are working with them, I know we just had a ribbon cutting for Hope Family Therapy and just how everybody's working together for the greater good, cause we know mental health is definitely a need in the county.
Well, Adam has been on the board for Hope Family. We're talking somehow about having them become a designated coordinated organization for us. When we become a certified behavioral health clinic, we might be able to do some family therapy with us, but we can collaborate in that way. Stevie Durkin and I with QHC in town, we talk often, we're on the same one, a state committee together to, to network and to try to determine how to work more closely together, we had a meeting just this past week in regards to that. So, we're trying to collaborate with other entities that provide service. We've recruited several people away from Valley Hope recently to work on our addiction unit, so I'm not sure how the grace as we are in right now, but we do refer to them and vice versa, so.
For people that are looking for information, do you have a website?
We do. Yeah, it's W W W dot the guidance hyphen C T R dot org. And that's in our brochure, so if you just, if you just Google the Guidance Center Leavenworth or Guidance Center Northeast, you'll see it.
Okay.
And it's recently been updated, so pretty current information.
Especially with the youth, then the younger people, that's the way they get their information anymore, so.
Absolutely.
And I'd be happy to read the board members for the Guidance Center, but I might get a name wrong too, but you can correct me if I'm wrong, or you could just read them if you don't find.
Sure. Aggie Asher is from Atchison, Megan Shealy is from Atchison, Shannon Mize is from Atchison, and Diana Gaddis.
Oh, yeah, I totally could have nailed the Atchison name, so I was just. But yes, so it's just nice to, for the public to know that they have local representation and, you know, if they have questions, they're, they're more first in having the answer than sometimes a county commissioner.
Well, I know that Aggie and Shannon are well-known names in town, as is Megan Shealy, I believe. Diana may be less known, but she is a pillar at Atchison Hospital and been a good addition to our, she used to work at Kansas Mental Health Center up north, so she has building experience, provides some help.
Any other questions? Any questions for us?
About my finance director, if you wanna get into the nitty-gritty, Jerry's there as well.
I appreciate the information you brought very much.
Yes, I do too, and, you know, we take these and we have to consider them, so, you know, we've, we've heard and we take everybody's requests and, you know, it takes a while for us to hash out, you know, find out for sure whether, you know, who we, yeah, we, so. Yeah. Thank you very much for your time, gentlemen too.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Royal Hall Trustees. I didn't know if there was anyone online, cause I can't read the names if there is. I would want to just, other questions for thirty thousand? Yeah.
I, I did have questions for them though, but I don't know if we want.
Why don't we email out their questions and we can get back maybe next week with, if you have any answers, and then maybe we would kind of read through what their request is and everything. Maybe somebody will. Or it needs to be online, okay, Project Concern. Are we?
I'm good. Nervous as always. All right, well, I know I sent my summary and all that stuff over, but following kind of similar to like what Keith mentioned about us, we have been funded by the statute. Let me get that number. Twelve dash sixteen eighty for services and programs for the elderly. Project Concern is asking or requesting the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, this is not an increase, this is the same that we've had for quite a few years. So, for twenty twenty-three, that's our request. Our senior nutrition programs include the congregate meals that are served at our two senior centers in the county and also the Meals on Wheels Home Delivery Service. Our nutrition programs are open to any county resident sixty and over regardless of their ability to pay, so that's a huge piece, that's a big reason why we need the support of the hundred and twenty-five. The hundred, the request of the hundred and twenty-five from Atchison County will help us cover daily operating costs that are associated with these programs. Currently serving about two hundred and thirty people in the county and probably finishing out twenty-two, closer to thirty-six thousand meals for the, for the year. Breaking it down a little bit, our projected cost per meal is eight dollars and fifty cents a meal. Obviously, expenses, food, gas, all those kind of fun increases, we may see a little bit of increases that are coming around, but right now, that's where it's at. The current reimbursements that we do get are from older American Act funding through the federal and then NSIP monies, which is a state program, and that combined reimbursement is only two dollars and sixty-five cents per meal. So, that leaves quite a gap to cover. We do ask patrons to contribute by ways of a suggested donation, the suggested donation is three dollars a meal, but that is not a requirement. So, right now, that, you know, if it's eight fifty and you do all the math and kind of stuff, three dollars is roughly about, you know, just over a third of that cost, but there's that no requirement to pay. And we're seeing about forty percent, thirty to forty percent of the people that participate actually contribute back, so, and donate to their food or meals. So, that's why, you know, it's pretty important that we have outside funding coming in. We do look for other funding sources, opportunities by grants. We're also part of the Accidental Community Foundation for donations. We participate in fundraising events and all that kind of stuff, but in the long run, the hundred and twenty-five just covers the basics of the shortfall of what it costs to feed the people in our senior program, so. Not much has changed, that's pretty consistent, I know you have lots of questions for me, I'm sure.
So, the, this request doesn't have anything to do with transportation, and that's grants for that.
Yeah.
Which comes through the area agency on aging.
No, we are partnered with Kansas Department of Transportation and it's all federal money that comes in through and state money through KDOT and them.
Or you're separate from the rest of transportation, KDOT, that area agency on aging, it's?
We're all a part of the same region and we get the same, we're part of the same CTD district. So, we get like eighty percent funding for transportation and we have to make up twenty percent or seventy, thirty, it depends on which you're looking at, admin or operating, but that's a completely different funding source, yeah. And area agency actually is the funnel for the federal and NSIP monies, they're the area agency on aging, so they get all the money from the federal and the state and then they divvy it out based on what we submit monthly for reporting.
I was just curious on the charitable donations.
So, at the end of our fiscal year on September thirtieth, that is the classification for our Atchison Area Community Foundation money. That's how Patsy had it labeled and that's that fund.
So, and you pretty much answered all of my other questions, I was just curious if you're a part of the foundation, if you had matching funds from state and federal. And then, just to reiterate, who's on your local board?
Okay.
That for the public, so they know who serves on Project Concern Board.
Yes, our chair is Jeff Shealy and the vice is Paul Slabinek with Atchison Community Health Clinic, I gotta get it right. Cat Cruiser from Atchison is my, is the treasurer and Kristen Robinson from the Guidance Center is the secretary. We also have Ruth Yoder and Pearl Rice from Effingham, Ethan Hausman, Donald Brighton, Keith Ellison, Karen Wilson from the area agency and Jay David was on our board in the city of Jetso Point, another city commissioner for that position. But I know it's a topic that they, they have on there, so.
And do you do any annual fundraisers or any?
We've done our Chili Soup Supper, pre-COVID, it was like, it was like three, four thousand-ish range. We attempted to come back in spring and have one that was a little bit tailored differently and it was only around a thousand dollar, like profit for us. So, yes, we do with COVID being kind of a little snappy, we, we'll see where it goes in the future, so. We have that, we are partnered with United Way, so there is a three-month period where we cannot do any fundraising because of their capital fundraising and stuff like that, so. Well, sorry, what was that? And so, with Atchison Area and United Way, there's a period where you cannot fundraise if you're a member of their, like you can't hold any outside events because that's part of their contractual agreement. That they, they have a set campaign period from, I believe, October one to the end of the year. So, like, we can't hold big fundraisers during that timeframe, but you can outside of it, I could send you a copy of what that.
Eliminate your competition.
Yeah, I mean, it's the piece of it, so.
Anything more?
Well, if there's anything that you know, call me. Anyway, be back, yeah.
All right, thanks, guys.
Chamber. In the nick of time. What's that? Just in the nick of time. Can you receive all of the information, or?
I do not.
We got it this morning.
Well, yeah. You got a copy? Yes.
I haven't had time.
One question I had that I didn't see from the information we got sent this morning was a request.
The same as last year.
Okay.
Yes.
And seventy-five hundred for the chamber and seventy-five hundred for Main Street.
Yes. I know historically, the seventy-five hundred for the chamber has been a historic number. Last year was the first year of the seventy-five hundred for Main Street.
And then, I'm just sorry you weren't here for Commissioner comments, but I just, I'm asking everybody the same, just to provide more information for the public on kind of what we do here. As far as what you do with our funds, how that helps and benefits your organization for the county. You can start with that. I know they're mental, so it's hard to see compared to, but I'm just curious if you can explain that.
Sure, how about I give you just an overview?
Yep.
If there's holes that need to be filled in.
That'd be fantastic.
So, I think clearly from the financials, you'll see that the chamber is on extraordinarily solid financial ground at this point in time. We have three, we now have three pieces of three different hats that we wear. Both Chamber, we hold the visit, the tourism contract with the city of Atchison, and we have, in the last year, twenty twenty-one, we were, became a Kansas Main Street. So those are the three different hats. As far as the chamber goes, again, solid financial health, we are, have kept reserves, which we, I don't know that have existed in the past. That was out of pure craziness because of COVID, that we were unsure as to what path the city would take. So we wanted to make sure that we were on so, solid financial footing. So we did a lot of cutting unnecessary expenses, doing the things that we all probably did in the county, just making sure that we were able to sustain ourselves through a very difficult period of time. Especially, we continue to do annual leadership classes, which we were able to do again this year. The annual dinner will be in June of this year. We moved it off of the January, February timeframe simply because of COVID. This last, this earlier this year, we anticipate that moving back to its normal winter time. As far as the visit, the visit aspect of what we do, all of our, we now capture data. We, we track metrics for how we're doing, what we're doing. Those are a set of metrics that we developed over the last year. All of those metrics are up over the previous year. Just one example that I'll give you is, the Sally House, we manage the backend of that. When I, when our, we took over in twenty twenty, we were doing about thirty-eight thousand dollars a year. It's all out, we, not us, we share that revenue with the owner of the home. But they were booking about some thirty-eight thousand dollars a year in Sally House bookings. Last year we did eighty, this year we're going to surpass a hundred thousand dollars. So we're nearly tripled our booking into the Sally House, which means there's triple the amount of people coming into the community, which is a, is a good thing. We're able to track that. We have a very, I'd like to think it's a sophisticated digital campaign that we, digital strategy. The, one of the good things for us about Sally House is I'm actually able to track ROI based on what we're spending and what we're doing to the metric of actually booking, so I'm able to track dollar of investment, dollar of revenue generated. Our reach, our engagement is growing exponentially. I think I put in the tourism metrics, Big Mac can get this to you. We reach about seventy-five to a hundred thousand people a month out of our social channels, so that's all going well. We're now starting where we're doing tours. Again, we've got bus tours, van tours, groups of people that are coming into the community. We facilitate getting the book that the various tourism assets, actually just met with the assets this morning. One of the things that we're trying to do is, it's a novel concept, but get all of our tourism assets on the same page and actually collaborate. Days of operation, hours of operation, all that kind of stuff, so that we have a destination. If you're going to truly be a destination, you'd have to be able to drive people here, and they have to have something to do. So getting all of our assets on the same page, assets being the Mushnick Cray, the Birthplace Museum, the Hairy Museum, our historical museum, et cetera. We are creating Money River Music Festival will be this fall, September, September twenty-fourth, partnering with Scott Weinman and Travis Grossman. Money River will become our signature fall event, since we have free events in the community. It'll be a full-day music festival. We have two national acts booked already. One national recording artist and a St. Louis-based national blues artist that we'll be announcing soon. We have a regional country act that we have booked. At least, I believe they're booked, they keep saying yes, but they asked another question, so artists are funny. So I'm assuming that we have, then we'll, we'll, we'll have three local to regional bands that will embed in there. So where, where three, our main stage is booked, we'll have a side stage as well, all on the riverfront this year, all free. I believe we have a corporate sponsor for that, at least an underwriter of it, so. Real excited about that particular event, which will be not necessarily new, but it will certainly be put on steroids. Our haunted season, our preparations are underway. Haunted season, as you know, is a big, is a big deal for us. Last year, we used a scarcity model of booking or trolley tours. So I would put out two for Saturday, one for Sunday, we'd sell out, we'd sell out, we'd sell out, I'd add, we'd sell out, we'd add, we'd sell out, we'd add. So we, we were sold out. Every single trolley was sold out for five straight weeks. That's expanded to six weeks this year. We hope, we've actually just got a new driver. So hopefully, we'll be able to expand to Friday, Friday started again, so they bring the people. As I said earlier, the biggest issue for us is just asset collaboration, just getting everybody on the same page, which is, you know. An event, and itself, as far as, well, it may be worse. It may be worse. Main Street, we built it off to a great start. Kansas Main Street and Main Street America came in in December of last year and did some stakeholder meetings, both with ourselves and with stakeholders in the community, absent us. And the feedback was extraordinary. We got Main Street America so that we were not a new Main Street. We were acting as though we were a mature Main Street. So that was good to hear, because part of the issue is that, you know, they don't issue you a magic wand when they give you Main Street designation. They just say, here it is, and let's go. And, you know, most people want something done, you know, we have a magic wand and it's all about, it's a little bit more complex than that. We are doing, we've got surveys in the field right now on downtown design guidelines as it relates to just the, because of the mall coming down, the aesthetics have changed for the holidays, so the city has tasked us with being the face of that, that public participation. So we're in the middle of doing that, looking at how we engage the community from a design standpoint for downtown, knowing full well that Benedictine will be a huge portion of that from, from opening, from moving days to approximately homecoming, we'll have Benedictine flags flying in downtown, just as an intentional act of welcoming these families, these visitors, these people who are regular guests in large community, and spending lots of money on a regular basis, that will be a part of it. To that end, we, we really strengthened those partnerships. We're, we're weaving ourselves into every single level of Benedictine, not just a, you know, relationship with Steve, but down to Diane Holly, who's now on the Chamber Board, who is student activities. So one of the things that we're doing with regard to Main Street is, we're trying to draw people into the community in capturing that audience that Benedictine has, in driving them downtown. So we're doing kind of a test case, we're doing a fall concert series down near downtown, at the Capitol Mall, to try and draw folks down there. One of the ideas that's got tossed around that we're actually going to hopefully implement is the, the headline act for that will be a soca duo, who is a couple of B.C. professors, but the opening act will be, it'll be Benedictine students open mic for an hour, which they do regularly on campus. We're going to draw them into downtown. So just creative ideas like that to try and drive people into the community, into downtown. So that the fall concert series, we obviously will do an extraordinarily robust shop small campaign that we did last year. We did every, every channel available to us from a marketing standpoint, we use radio, print, and digital. We handed out packets, we did signage at stores, but we'll continue to do that in a robust way. And then finally, the Christmas parade, which last year saw, there were estimates of a quarter of a million people here, but I think that might be an exaggeration, I'm not sure. It was, I use the Irish method of counting parade guests, but I could be off, it could have been twenty-five hundred. But again, no one else was counting, I was, so I've yet to find anybody that could, you know. People around me joke that numbers going up every time I've spoken publicly about it, so.
It's like the, you know, your, the best year.
The best, that's, that's.
It was the best year. It's been the best year for thirty straight years.
Exactly, exactly. I can appreciate that. So we've done, to that answer is what we're doing with your money. I mean, and I'd be happy to answer any specific questions you have or any thoughts or comments or.
Is the chamber part of the community foundation, the Atchison community?
Well, we're not.
And then can you just tell us who's on the Chamber Board? And then also, I was curious. Just because I think, I made notes on the back, so I'm going to need a back, but I think that's your list of.
It was, it was last year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you have.
We have new members, changes of.
But it looks right, other than Chanda. You said Diane Holly.
Diane Holly, Cooper Slough.
So I just.
Jill Form. Were the three new.
Okay, so Elizabeth Collins, Derek Franklin, Jesse Greenlee, Jordan Hawke, Diane Holly, Jamie Madison, Bill Mashad, Justin Prajon, Jody Moore. Yep. Okay, Amy Finch, Jody Moore, Dan Rapplinger, Sherry Swinton, Jill Thorne, Nico's the smallest.
Nico's not.
Joe Warren.
Yes.
And Joel Langer and Cooper Slough.
Jill's not.
Just so the public, it serves on that. Also, do you have different board members for the Main Street program?
I do.
Okay, and who is, who are the board members?
Kitty McDowell, Scott Weinman, Angie Kreider, Alex. Thank you. Alex Garing. And Angela Spronk.
Okay, so downtown business owners. That was just one of the feedback that I had gotten from a downtown business owner is how to stay in tune with what Main Street's doing and the best communication channel. Maybe you could speak to that or.
They have questions or ideas or thoughts or concerns, just make contact with one of those people or make contact with us.
Okay.
That's really the, we, we all suffer from the ability to communicate. I mean, we, we use every channel available to us, as do you. I mean, and you still hear people come up to you on the street and go, wow, I didn't hear about, you know, you know, in my view, you know, being part of a community is a two-way street, you know, it's reciprocation. If you, if you want to be involved, you need to make yourself involved. And so, you know, we are doing everything possible we can to communicate about every possible event going on in the community. And there are people that need to communicate back to us and say, all right, this is what we're doing. We're doing this on this date, this, you know, actually I had that conversation this morning with Kristi Harris, who's doing, you know, does phenomenal stuff on agritourism. Why aren't you, I'm like, you gotta tell me what you're doing, because I don't know exactly what you're doing all the time. We ask, but, you know, sometimes people get busy and they don't communicate, but so, yeah. If someone has a question, feel free to reach me. And if I don't know the answer, I'll make it up.
And then, as far as the funds for the chamber, they come through bed tax from this.
Correct, we're, we're transit guest tax only, the, in the, prior to me, they were getting a, it's, oh, no, they were getting transit guest tax plus a general fund commitment. Initially, I believe it was up to eighty thousand dollars. I think over time it went down to thirty, roughly. We do not get any general fund support. And mind you, we've added another whole arm of our organization through Main Street that we are doing, the, now the city's allowed us to use transit guest tax as a piece of that funding vehicle to do Main Street as well. But we're, we're doing more with less.
And as far as, you said the city tasked you with the public participation in the surveys. Who did the surveys come from, the chamber or Main Street, or do you just go to the public or the business owners or?
Yes, yes.
All, okay.
Everybody.
Perfect.
We've, we've gone out through emails to the membership directly. We've gone out to downtown businesses directly. We've gone out to chatter on four consecutive weeks. I think we're up week four, week three or four. And we've gone out onto our social channel on Atchison Chamber, so we're multi-channel. And then they've gone out to every board that we, that's affiliated with us, every board or task group. So we're getting, we're not where we want to be, but we're, we're nearing a hundred as far as surveys, which is a good number, I think, for us.
And so the bed tax, I mean, goes to tourism, really?
The transit guest tax is up, yes, so, yes.
And so you're basically just, and then outside of the transient guest tax, the county is fifteen, are there any other?
Well, membership, obviously, yeah. I mean, membership, we generate money at the, our retail store, the gift shop. We generate money through Sally House. We get a fifty percent piece of whatever we're doing there. So that's, that's going well, you know. Trying to think of there are other, other sources of revenue, but that's pretty much it. We're, we're pretty lean and mean at this point. I mean, we, we have, so we're doing more with less, we're.
We're using less power.
We are losing. Yes. Yeah, we're, I'm too lean right now, because I'm stressed, but it is what it is at this point in time. Appreciate, thanks for putting me in, too.
Five minutes is enough, notice. Five minutes is enough, notice.
Good afternoon. Sherry Becker, county attorney, is not here today. So I'm here, kind of with her, on her behalf. We, her and I filled out an application for the Crime Victims Assistance Fund grant through the DOJ. And we, they are in their application process seeking a letter of support. So we had asked the commission if we could have a letter of support on behalf of that grant for Atchison County. behalf of that grant for Acheson County.
Sign a letter of support. It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Unscheduled. How long? Twenty minutes? And three commissioners, yourself and Kat.
I'm with the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session at one fifty PM to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel as allowed by KSA seventy five forty three nineteen B one. And that the purposes of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee and that the board cannot have executive session at two ten PM in the commission room, first basement of the courthouse. Those present will be the three commissioners, HR Director Jody Moore, County Councilor Patrick Henderson and Finance Director Mark Silver.
To have a comment again. I have a lot of paper.